Okay, welcome. This meeting is officially called to order. Number one on the agenda is the opening prayer. Wendy, will you do that for us, please?
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we come to you first with grateful hearts for all the many blessings you bestow upon our community and our city. We thank you for the privilege of gathering here to discuss and make decisions that will affect our city. We ask that you guide us in our deliberations so that we make the best decisions. As always, I ask that you remind each of us that we are neighbors and friends, and heated discussion is not productive, so we hope we have a good evening tonight. We ask that you would continue to hold in your care all those families who have suffered horrific losses of children and loved ones over the past several days. We ask that you would bless our leaders of Hendersonville, of Sumner County, of Tennessee, and of the United States of America. Continue to pour your blessings out on us as you have always. We ask that you would protect those who are here. We ask your blessings on those who are not here this evening. And we ask all of this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Wendy. Next is roll call. Zach?
Altheizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Kerr?
Here.
Longmire? Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
That is eight present and one absent.
All right, we have public hearings tonight, so the first one will be the request by Century Communities to annex 32.8 acres into the city limits with a plan of services to rezone the property to Mixed Residential Plan Development, MXR-PD, and to approve a comprehensive development plan for the property. The property is located on the west side of Avant Lane, south of Old Drake's Creek Road, as identified on Sumner County Tax Map, 138 Parcel 036.00. So...
Did you hear all that from me, Brad?
Tried to. Okay, so we have a group of people tonight that are here to speak for the public hearing, and the first one is named Mark Evans. Will you tell us your name, your address, please, for the record?
Good evening. My name is Mark Evans. I live at 1567 Drake's Creek Road in Durham Farms. I'm a resident of Hendersonville for 33 years and been in Durham Farms for eight years. I'm also representative of BOMA. I'm in Ward 6. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service on the planning commission. You have a difficult job, and I appreciate the time that you spend doing that. And I thank Keith and his department for the work that they do, leading our planning department. We have an excellent planning department, so thank you. I want to say that, you know, traffic is a concern for almost every city. I was in a conference a few weeks ago, and that was the number-one issue at the conference, was talking about traffic and what to do about that. I don't think anybody had any answers. But for the city of Hendersonville, we know that traffic is a problem, and we've grown exponentially, and the roads have not. The roads are desperately inadequate to match the growth that we have in the community, and we must address that first. Yes, I'm a part of a community, Durham Farms, that we have 1,200 homes there now, and I love it there. I like it. We are on Drake's Creek, and it's a very busy road. A couple of years ago, we did a traffic study here in the city, and the Drake's Creek corridor was, at that time, said to have about 9,000 cars that travel through there every day. That was before the light was put at the Long Hollow and Drake's Creek, at the other end of Durham Farms. That was before Durham Farms was finished out, and that was before Norman Farms was finished out. Since that time, those have been finished, and we probably are having 11,000 to 12,000 cars come through that area every day. The reason I'm speaking tonight, and for a lot of people who are here that probably don't want to speak, we cannot consider any new homes in this area until the roads are improved greatly. We do have two projects that are on...that are ready to go, but they're not going to be finished anytime soon. We do know that the Drake's Creek and Stop 30 intersection is going to be...start construction, hopefully, in the spring of 2026, but that's going to be a two- to three-year project and won't be completed till almost 2028, 2029. So that's going to be an important thing for our community, but it's only a part of the puzzle. The other part of that is that we're looking for a light that's going to be at the New Shackle Island and Old Drake's Creek intersection. That's the pumping station there for the utility district. That's been long-needed as well. There are wrecks there almost weekly, and today we had another one that happened this afternoon.
It took them two hours to go to.
So these are problems, and these have to be addressed before we can consider any more new homes. So I'm asking for you to vote no for annexation into the city. I know that that probably, if we vote no and we're not going to take it into the city, it might go to the county. We'll address that when that happens and goes to the county. Thank you.
Next on the list is Chris, I think it's Puckett?
Yep.
Name and address, please.
So my name is Chris Puckett. I live at 102 Nighthawk Road. So forgive me if I haven't spoken publicly since, like, college, I think, so... So I just got a prepared statement. I just want to read because I'm a little nervous, so. So I said, "Thank you for giving me this opportunity to tonight's speak. I live directly next door to the site of the proposed development. I'm here today to respectfully voice my opposition to this project. First, I want to make it clear that I understand the need for responsible growth in our community. However, growth must be balanced with the realities what our local infrastructure can actually support. I've seen firsthand negative effects that a high-density development can have. I first moved into Durham Farms in 2018 during the Phase 1 of that development. We were made a lot of promises by builders, developers, that have not really come to fruition and resulted in a negative impact in that part of the community. I don't...I love living in Durham Farms, but I've just seen the negative impacts it has had so far, just basically the traffic, really. Our roads are already under significant strain during peak hours. Early morning, mid-afternoon, evening after work, it is not uncommon to see long backups, significant delays, and congestion in and around our neighborhood. Adding another high-density development next door likely bringing hundreds of additional cars will only intensify these problems. Emergency vehicles, school buses, and residences will all be affected. We've already seen that we need an additional traffic light at the corner of New Shackle Island Road and Old Drake's Creek due to high amounts of traffic accidents and long delays here. At the south end of Durham Farms, a roundabout's already been proposed there due to traffic concerns. Both of these areas are really highly congested, impacting the safety of our families that drive through these areas daily. Beyond traffic, I'm also concerned about the added pressure on utilities, parking, public services, including schools, hospitals, the fire department, police officers. Our community infrastructure was not designed at this excessive level of homes, and I'm worried that rushing forward risks long-term inefficiencies, costs, and possible safety concerns ultimately fall back on existing taxpayers. Another critical concern is the potential effect on property values. I think adding another high-density development placed directly adjacent to another one already is just going to make nearby properties less attractive to future home buyers. I just think really it's about fairness. I think we've worked hard a bit of life here that shouldn't be penalized by developers that benefit outside interest at the expense of existing homeowners. So I would just urge you to consider these consequences. I think we need to have responsible development, but that doesn't mean we need to have unchecked development. I think we should pursue growth strategies that enhance our community, not diminish it, and are respectfully asked to council to either reject this or to significantly scale it back. Again, I'm not saying we can't build on that property one day, but just having that many homes right next to our already 1,200 homes is kind of not where we want to go, so. Thanks.
Next on the list is Gary Dyes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Dyes. I live at 1409 Drake's Creek Road. I'm before Durham Farms. I got to watch Durham Farms be built from a nice cornfield and hayfield to what it is today. But I want to speak on something totally different today. There's been plenty of discussion that I want to talk about stormwater management. And you're going to say, "Well, why does this guy want to talk about stormwater management?" I'm not an expert in the field, and I want to talk...I want to be a historian for a few minutes. If you take from Long Hollow Pike all the way down to Indian Lake, where we go across the railroad, one mile wide on each side of Drake's Creek corridor, you've got 5,000 acres of land. Our FEMA requirements were issued in 2012 after the great flood, as you guys remember, and we're still using that FEMA standard today. Unfortunately, that 5,000 acres has become 70% occupied now with all of our growth, and we're still living to that same FEMA standard. Why do I talk about the FEMA standard? Well, that's how we determine how we want to manage our water, our stormwater. And I can attest today of strong evidence that we're failing. The greatest evidence of our failing is our nice sandbar we have outside our park here in Hendersonville. All that dirt is from the erosion on Drake's Creek. I believe the majority of it happens between Long Hollow Pike down to the lake, because you can see the erosion. Now, we've converted several thousand acres, and we've taken this farmland and turned it into beautiful homes and companies. Alderman Evans has two pictures, a picture of 2012, and I think I'll leave this for you guys, too. 2012 and 2023, and it is vivid. Sir, can I give this to you?
Sure.
There's 2012, and there's today. You flip it over.
Yep.
Since 2012, we've had some great growth, but with that growth has been the inability for us to manage our stormwater. And I think anybody that lives on Drake's Creek Road and now that part of the area would attest to that. I got witness that parts of the creek, we've lost 30 feet of land, taxable land, as you would say, but it's not there, so is it taxable? Anyway, from that, I don't have an answer. What I do have is that we've got to do something differently. We've got to strengthen our stormwater process and not live in 2012 standards because we're producing more. The weather's different. Here's a few examples. This year alone, at 1409 Drake's Creek Road, we had four floods that reached within five feet of the 100-year floodplain. One in your...okay, the new floodplain. On April the 3rd, I reached 487 feet. Our floodplain is 491. That's how close we're getting. Now, we don't see that globally because this is a creek-related issue. This is not a Cumberland River issue. This is a Drake's Creek issue because we've built so much around Drake's Creek, nowhere for the water to go. Have we done retention? Yes, but I can attest that Durham Farms' retention was built for 600 homes. It's got 1,200 homes. Got a problem. So I don't have an answer to this. I want smart people...I'm not the smart person, to think about this. We can't continue to build with no good stormwater management process. It's not all our fault in the city. We're taking on water from Gallatin, the Chanel Farm that's being built. That's our problem now. That's a Drake's Creek problem. So my report to you is to...we've got to do something different, therefore, right now, I'm not in favor of this program. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Cindy Williams?
I'm a nervous wreck. I've never spoken anywhere. Although I was a professor, so I did that for 22 years. I am Cindy Williams, a resident of Durham Farms. I live at 105 Misty Way. The developers proposed...he has two entrances. One, I think, might be Nighthawk. I'm not sure of the...the other one is our street. Our street is a little street. I bought on that street, and I asked the builder, "Not your problem. What about that land?" Because my daddy was the biggest real estate developer in Washington, DC. She said, "Oh, that's floodplain." I said, "Okay, we're good." No, we're not good now. I am against it totally. We have enough problems. Every day when I drive out Drake's Creek and turn left on Old Shackle, I pray to Jesus I make it out safely and I drive a Hummer. Seriously. We don't have adequate...we need a light there. Stop 30, I know, is getting fixed. We need patience for development, and Durham Farms is not a public community. That developer made both of his entrances and exits to our streets. He could put them adjacent to grassland yards and force his traffic to go in left or right out the areas you fix, and that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
You'll have to excuse me. I hope I don't mask your this name. Helen Megabin?
McGibben.
McGibben? Okay. I got close. Not too bad.
Hi, I'm Helen McGibben. I live at 1562 Drake's Creek Road. Moved there six years ago this week from Big D, Dallas, Texas, and never thought of not be a city girl, but we are loving it here. And so for the reasons that we love...one of the reasons is all the greenery around us. So I know you guys have to be very careful how this city grows, because you're going to lose what's beautiful about Hendersonville if you don't. My biggest concern is, too, about the traffic going in and out of the area. There's only Old Drake's Creek Road and Drake's Creek Road to get in and out of Durham Farms. And definitely, that light has to be fixed at New Shackle and Old Drake's Creek. And Avant itself, where this proposal is, is a little two-lane road with a 15 mile-an-hour speed limit. So obviously, that street is going to be undersized for adding more houses, especially if they want it to be a 15 mile-an-hour road, which people don't obey anyway. And I was looking at what FEMA said on the flood maps, too, and I agree with the gentleman that spoke before me. I can see on that map there where the parcel...that's where the 100-year floodplain goes up to it. They want to build right up to it. So just don't think it's a very good idea. And, you know, for that density of housing to be put in, it would be different if it was just a few houses on that, is what I'm meaning. But having moved here from Texas, I see Tennessee, you guys are struggling, and I see that you are working on it to get the infrastructure done before the development, you know, because I'm...we just need to do it. And I just wanted to add, too, Stop 30, that's a big, big piece of land over there, and I hope you all really think a lot before you allow new developments to go in or off of Stop 30, because that road is really kind of dangerous and it's very overcrowded. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for all you do.
Matt Valentine?
My name is Matt Valentine. I live at 475 Norman Way. I have been here for about three years, and I actually have the opposing view to everyone before me. I have two young children, three and a half and six months. The amount of park space, we find incredibly limited. Every concern that's been raised is valid. Everyone knows traffic is terrible. I drive it every day. Two completely separate issues. I think holding this project ransom because we need to fix a traffic problem, we would never have another development in Hendersonville if we're worried about traffic and we wait to fix traffic before we build 61 homes. Everyone's used the number 1,200 homes in Durham Farms. Adding 61 homes is not going to change the trajectory of traffic through Durham Farms. I know it's bad. Again, we live right behind Durham Farms. We see it all the time. The one thing I've also noticed is the chaos with the traffic when there's an event in these fields that are currently there. That's also a large issue. That's going to be alleviated by some extra parking space. I think the project's great. I think utilizing some leverage, utilizing a partnership with the builder in order to get these things out of it is exactly what we would want. Responsible development was a term used by someone before me. This seems to me like a responsible development, where we're actually going to get something in return rather than just building 61 homes and just having them on the property. So when I rush you out of here, it's not because I don't care. I promise you, I do. I have two young children. I got put to bed. So thank you for your time, and good luck. Appreciate you.
Eddie Roberson?
My name is Eddie Roberson, and I live at 1049 Smoke Rise Lane. It's in Autumn Creek. I'm also an alderman in Ward 6, and I'm also chairman of the Capitol Projects Committee for the city. And I've lived in Autumn Creek since 2011, and that, of course, was before Durham Farms. I did not oppose Durham Farms because I thought that it was good land, and I knew that it would bring good neighbors, which many of you have moved there because Durham Farms was available. I do want to thank this board. I served on this board before I became an alderman, and I know how difficult it is to try to define what smart development is. I've tried in my own mind since being on the BOMA for seven years now to...what is smart development? What I hear over and over again is residents say, "Try to make the infrastructure improvements coincidental with the development. Make that part of a development." We didn't do that at Durham Farms, and we're trying to catch up now. Alderman Evans mentioned two projects. The first project was the Old Drake's Creek and New Shackle. When I first ran for alderman, especially in Drake's Point, that was a constant problem that was brought to my attention, and we've worked on it. That is a state road, so the city has its hands kind of tied, and it's also in the county. It's not even in the city, but with the help of BOMA and the mayor, we did help fund that improvement. So even though it's a state road and in the county, we're making that improvement. Again, it's going to take several years for that to happen. Stop 30 in Drake's Creek, the same thing. But one other new Capitol project that's going to help this area is recently, the staff has announced that they are doing a design of the Stop 30-New Shackle Island intersection. A lot of people that come down Stop 30 turn right to go to Beach, and so it's in for this fiscal year to do a design improvement for that. So we've got a lot going on. So at this time, I would ask the board to postpone any development at this area. And just to let you know what BOMA has done, recently, we voted a moratorium on high-density development. That's a drastic step, but we felt like we needed a breather. We felt like we needed to pause and to let us catch up on some of the improvements that are needed. We're also looking at impact fees, which would be a fee on development that would help us pay for some of these projects. What we're trying to do is try to put the cost on the cost causer and not raise property taxes and to try to put...to try to raise money for these projects. So one of these days, this property's going to be developed, and when it is developed, I hope it is in the city, because then we can be more careful of...in planning and what the off-site improvements are. But at this time, until some of these projects get improved, I think it's smart development to say no at this time and pause, and let's complete some of these projects, and then we'll look at possible developments in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Roland, I see you're the applicant, okay? You're going to have your opportunity in a little bit to speak, okay? So you won't do it right now. Thank you. Just didn't want you to think we skipped you, okay? All right. So that's all for that hearing?
That's all for that one. The other two can get closed down after we close this one.
All right, that's all for that public hearing, so that one is officially closed now. We have two...oh.
If there's anybody else that would like to speak? I was told that that we got them.
Oh, if there is.
Well, go ahead and stand up and go to the microphone and say your name and your address. We thought we canvassed the audience beforehand and got everybody.
Thank you for the opportunities to speak with you tonight. My name is Tricia Langen, and I'm at 106 Championship Place. I speak to you tonight as an eight-year resident of Durham Farms, but I also speak to you as a retired city...senior city planner, AICP certified. I have been involved in more than enough developments over my career. I've helped build things. I've worked against things. I have heard all of the comments. I agree with most everything that was said, but my true concern is what is going to happen to Avant Lane? When I moved there eight years ago, we were told, of course, by the developer, who means nothing now, that that road would be closed. That didn't happen. It became a park road with a 15 mile-an-hour speed limit. Stand at my corner any day, any time, and you can watch the cars go 40 and 50 miles an hour down the street. The other thing, and this may be just a comment, it's not really a question, but there are utility markings on Avant now. Does that mean the road's going to be widened with this project? Or anything's going to be done with it? Or is it just supposed to look like a done deal? And that's what it smacks of. The rugby field...I bought my house because it's one of the few places that actually has a clear view all the way to the trees. Now I've got lights. I've got another light from the bathroom that's on all night long that is not downcast and is not shielded, but shines right into my rooms. I also watched the lightning detector flash, yellow lights, five flashes, stop, five more flashes. I watched that three days in a row and finally called the city. I've seen that happen twice now, that it's not being taken care of. It's nice that we know when there's lightning, but the road is not maintained. The road is not checked for speeding in any way. The rugby field...and I sat in on a meeting, I believe, with Mr. Free and the head of the Rugby Association, if I remember correctly, and was told that that field was going to be used by youth. Well, some of these guys that are playing rugby, if they're youth, then I'm five years old. The cars are parked up and down Avant. They're parked on the streets, our streets. I mean, I understand that they're a public street, and anyone can park there, but that isn't what we bought into. I just...and again, going back to my work as a planner, it's a nice design and all... it's a nice design and all, and I don't know if that one gentleman felt that he was going to be able to use parkland there. I don't know, I didn't catch that, for the practice field. That just means there's going to be more people at the rugby center. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and I hope that you will look at this in a manner that will consider the city and the residents of Durham Farms. And I just find it strange that one person can kill the whole project at the front of Drake's Creek for the five roads. And yet, there are a lot of people here that are not happy with this project and I hope that you would consider voting it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the other people in the audience want to speak? Okay, we will now keep, we will call that public hearing closed. We have two more, two more public hearings, nobody to speak?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll read them and then after that, done. Okay. Second public hearing is requested by Hendersonville Planning Department to hear comments on amending the Hendersonville subdivision regulations for the city of Hendersonville. Nobody was signed up to speak for that, anybody in the audience here for that reason? I'll consider that one closed. Second, or the third one is requested by Hendersonville Planning Department for the purpose of receiving public comment on proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance for the city of Hendersonville. Again, anyone here to speak on behalf of that? We'll consider that one now closed. Thank you very much. We have public comments, agenda items only, anybody signed up for that? Okay, no one signed up for that? Anybody here wanted to speak on any agenda item that did not sign up for that? All right, we'll consider that closed, thank you very much. Next thing we have is acceptance of the agenda. So anybody had time, everybody's had time to look at it, anybody have any comments? Any changes, anything you want to do differently? All right, we'll leave it as it is, I need a motion please.
Show move.
Okay, I hear a first and a second. We'll do a roll call, Zach.
Motion to accept the agenda passed with eight yeses.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes from last meeting on Auga, from August, we'll see here, yeah, from August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
Okay, I heard, I heard a motion and I heard a second. So first one was from Wendy and then I heard Mark, okay. And somebody down here, sorry about that. All right, we can do this by boys, correct? Since it's the minutes. All right, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. It passes, thank you. Next we have is the consent agenda. So Lincoln Rockland Preliminary Plant Owner Frank Richard Messenger Living Trust. The location is parcel one sixty zero six six point zero one. Lead Planning Staff Timothy Whitten, you want to take it away and tell us about it, Timothy?
Sure, so this is. Thank you, Jim. The comprehensive development plan for Lincoln Rockland was approved by the Planning Commission in July this year and then was approved by BOMA, passed the second reading of BOMA in August. So that concludes the development part of the portion of the process, now they're in the planning stage. First part of that is preliminary plat, which will establish the right-of-way for the new road. If this is approved, that'll be followed up by a final plat and then the site plan stage. So the preliminary plat is in substantial compliance with the approved CDP. Per BOMA, per BOMA's approval, they are, they will be shifting that road alignment so that it lines up with the Speedway ingress egress. So that's showing that image there. So if this is approved tonight, they will adjust the preliminary plat to show that new alignment. And they have agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you, Timothy. Anybody from the Planning Commission have questions, comments? So no comments, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, it's both of these? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, I jumped ahead, I'm sorry you all. Next is Mansker Farms Phase Nineteen Section One C Final Plat Owner Meritage Homes of Tennessee Incorporated. Location parcel one forty-four zero eight four point zero zero. And this one's yours, Caitlin, will you speak to it?
Yes, sir. Meritage Homes has submitted a final plat for twenty-six single-family homes and open space lots of five across eleven acres. This extends Manor Way, Stein Street and connects with Section One B through Farm Ridge Drive. And this was, Section A was approved by Planning Commission in September of twenty-four. Section One B was approved September of twenty twenty-three and it is in compliance with the preliminary plat.
Any comments, questions? Okay, since they were grouped together, we vote on them together, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the two of them together on the consent agenda. With all staff comments, okay. So we have that, and we still have a second. All right, so we'll do this one by electronic vote.
Motion to approve the consent agenda passed with eight yeses.
Thank you very much. Next we have the development plans. So this first one up, let's see. Sorry, I'm just making myself my notes. So the first one up is Crestwater, CDP plus it's the Acceptant Plan of Services, okay? So the owner is Robert Avant and the location is one seven six five Avant Lane, parcel one thirty-eight zero three six point zero zero. Lead Planning Staff is Zachary Coleman and Caitlin Shin. So which one of you two is taking away? Zachary?
That would be me.
Go ahead, Zach.
So we're going to start, we're going to do both at the same time, the Plan of Services for the annexation and then we'll go into the comprehensive development plan. So starting off with the Plan of Services, Keith, did you have anything to add? Good, okay. So the applicant, Kim Lee Horn, on behalf of Century Communities has requested voluntary annexation into the city of Hendersonville from Sumner County for the property located at seventeen sixty-five Avant Lane in Hendersonville, Tennessee. The property totals thirty-two point eight acres. It's currently zoned RR, which is rural residential within Sumner County. It lies within the city of Hendersonville's urban growth boundary and it's within an area identified in Chapter Three of the city of Hendersonville's future land use and transportation plan as mixed-use neighborhood. The property lies directly adjacent to the east side of Durham Farms Development, which is owned MXRPD. And north of the city of Hendersonville Rugby Park, the applicant is requesting voluntary annexation under the MXRPD zoning district to allow for a single-family residential development of sixty-one lots. The required Plan of Services for the annexation has been prepared for the commission to consider and letters have been provided from utility providers confirming the ability of the site to be served by sufficient gas, electric and water sewer services. These are attached to the report and available for the commission along with the resolutions for the Plan of Services and the proposed annexation. Any questions on the Plan of Services?
I have no question. Anyone from the commission have questions?
Moving on to comprehensive development plan, in conjunction with the annexation, Plan of Services requests above, the applicant has submitted a comprehensive development plan application to rezone the property from rural residential, which is Sumner County, to mixed residential planned development MXRPD within the city of Hendersonville. The development includes the construction of sixty-one, uh, single-family homes in a single phase with minimum lot size of sixty-six hundred square feet or point one five acres. This meets the minimum lot area requirement of sixty-five hundred square feet for single-family homes in the MXR. No driveway access will be provided from Avant Lane. Sidewalks, a five-foot planting strip with street trees and curb and gutter will be installed along Avant Lane and throughout the development. Additionally, a four-foot fence is proposed along Avant Lane. Based on the zoning ordinance, all residential planned development shall conform to the design standards as prepared by the developer and approved by the Planning Commission. In conjunction with the approval of the development plan, the applicant has provided architectural notes to address these design standards from the zoning ordinance. The proposed single-family residences will be both front-loaded and side-loaded garages with side-loaded garages located along lots one through seventeen fronting Avant Lane. This prevents any driveway access from Avant Lane. Typical lots will have a twenty-foot front, six-foot side and twenty-foot rear setback. Elevations were provided for review, sample elevations. Future elevations would need to be submitted and approved by staff in advance prior to receiving a building permit. These elevations could only be approved if staff feel that the homes meet the character, style and size of the new development and surrounding area. Also, as part of this development plan, Century Communities has proposed the dedication of five point three six acres for gravel parking lot and practice fields to the city of Hendersonville Parks Department. The land will be conveyed to the city of Hendersonville along with a six-foot wide walking trail that will connect the proposed neighborhood to the dedicated public parkland. At the end of the report, the commission will find a list of items that should be considered in evaluating the planned development. Additionally, the findings of fact that should be included in any motion are included in the planning staff comments. Applicant has agreed to all staff comments, aside from comment four pertaining to the consideration of incorporating two single-wide garage doors rather than a single double-wide door. That completes the staff report.
All right. Will the applicant please step up? Thank you.
Did you want your PowerPoint?
Yes, please, we've got a presentation for the commission tonight that we'd like to share. I'm Josh Roland with Kim Lee Horn, Ten Lee Avenue in Nashville. First of all, thank you commissioners and community members for coming out. It was very helpful to hear comments from council members and the community about the project. We're excited to have the opportunity to have this discussion tonight and also be a partner with the city and a community member as well if this project moves forward. If you'd go to the next slide, please. I appreciate staff's comments, just wanted to touch on a few points additionally. Just reiterating that, you know, this project and our proposal this evening is consistent with the comp plan. You know, we're meeting the character and the quality of the Durham Farms subdivision and the surrounding community. We are within the urban growth boundary, so we're following the guidelines that the city has put in place for growth and we're here to be a responsible partner in doing so. Again, our lot sizes are consistent with the larger lots within Durham Farms and we, as we talk about the architecture, you'll see that we intend to meet the quality and the character of Durham Farms as well. We want our community to fit in seamlessly with the homes and with the community and have this act in some respects as an extension of Durham Farms. We're following the MXR zoning requirements, which is the same zoning that is within the Durham Farms subdivision. Next slide, please. A few details about our site plan, I think first, and it was brought up earlier, you know, this is not a proposal for high-density, this is not apartments, it's not townhomes, it's large lot, high-quality, single-family. The site as a whole is thirty-two acres. We're preserving up to sixty percent of that as open space with, you know, mixture of passive and active open space. The density we're proposing is one point seven units to the acre. It was asked earlier and mentioned, you know, what could this be in the county? The county on this property today currently allows up to one unit per acre, so we are above that, but not excessively so. As I get to my last slide, I want to touch on a few points of the benefits that we plan to bring for this project that help to offset the request for some slight density increase. We do have, actually, if you would go back one slide, please, we do have sixty-one single-family homes, as was previously mentioned. We were trying to be very intentional about the look of this project from Avant Lane. So we put no garages, no driveways onto Avant Lane. We've got an alley-fed garage on the back of these lots and so what you'll see is a hundred percent high-quality elevations for these homes fronting Avant Lane. One of the comments from staff that we have agreed to is that now the homes behind those facing Avant Lane will also be an alley-fed driveway, so we'll have consistent character on that first block. Trying to leave openings through our public streets and those cul-de-sacs to get pedestrian access out to the park and open space. You know, the question was asked before, what type of use is this beyond rugby fields? So one of the other criteria is a walking path that's being installed. You know, while there is an active use within the rugby field and the rugby use on the project, these passive trails will also provide a recreational use for the community at large. We are offering and promising to build a parking lot that doubles the size of the parking for the rugby facility. That'll pull all those cars off of the neighboring streets, off of Avant Lane. We're going to pave it and so that will hopefully help to alleviate some of the congestion that you see currently on Avant Lane. Questions about the state of Avant Lane today and what, you know, what it's in? The developer for Durham Farms did part of it. It's our plan to complete the rest on our west side of the development. We're going to widen the pavement section, add curb and gutter, add a detached sidewalk, add street trees. We're going to match the same decorative fencing along the front of those homes again, so that the character and the, kind of the patterns that you see in Durham Farms will be used in this development as well. Next slide, please. So what you've got on this screen are two different types of elevations. The two images at the top are two different single-family product for the lots in the rear of the property where the homes face the street. It was mentioned by Zachary that we have requested just one comment that we would like to not follow through with on the double-bay garage doors. We've, you know, our home builder clients talk with home buyers all the time and, you know, one of the biggest complaints is that as vehicles get bigger and people have more stuff in garages, it just becomes more difficult to navigate through those narrow garage doors. So what we have committed to doing is providing windows and enhancements on all the garage doors. So if it's decorative hardware, if it's some of the decorative cross-bracketing, there's a lot of very attractive options for double-wide garage doors on the market today. So we're committed to having a good-looking garage facing front for the homes that are in the rear of the property that you will not see from Avant Lane. The elevation on the bottom of the screen are the homes that we have currently proposed for Avant Lane. Again, it's a nice mix of stone or brick, hardy cement siding, good roof lines, good color palettes. Again, trying to create a nice kind of rich context here and really finish off the elevations along Avant Lane with very high-quality designs and materials. And I'm going to end on my last slide, just kind of summarizing some details, both sort of on the property and off the property, a lot of conversations about traffic and we certainly have heard those before and it's good to hear kind of some of the specifics tonight of the projects that are underway. Just for some context here, our, we did a lot count in the traffic analysis for this entire area. There's, you know, roughly eighteen hundred and fifty homes, both in Durham Farms and in the subdivisions outside of there. Those total nearly. Those total nearly fifteen thousand average daily trips. Clearly, that's what you guys are seeing today and what's causing some of the concern. Uh, this development of sixty-one homes is a small percentage of that overall, uh, area and the development. This project would create about six-hundred-and-forty average daily trips. That's, you know, less than four percent of the overall traffic volume, so just trying to give a little bit of scale and context in terms of what this project would add, uh, to the current traffic. You know, we've been very intentional about talking with staff and talking, uh, with others about what we can do, uh, that would provide community benefit as a part of this project. Again, it's, it's dedication, uh, to the Parks Department for additional, uh, practice field lands and, um, and the improvements to the parking, uh, parking lot there at the rugby facility. Uh, the street improvements along Avant Lane, it's gonna be widening the pavement section. It's gonna be building out that infrastructure along this project frontage, uh, to allow for, you know, both the on-street parking and the sidewalks and street trees. Uh, we've also agreed to doing a, uh, thirty-five-hundred-dollar impact fee per lot. That's not a requirement. That's something that we're offering, uh, to help mitigate some of the city's costs for the off-site traffic improvements that are currently being designed. And just something else to consider, you know, in terms of services, you know, this community becomes, uh, other tax-paying, uh, members of the community. Those taxes go in to fund what's already a pretty robust existing, um, amount of infrastructure in the area. So those, th- those tax dollars will just be there to further the city's projects, um, in the future. And I wanted to end on something that's pretty important relative to the overall development lifecycle. Timing was something that was brought up many times about traffic. We've got road improvements that are in design, being planned, two to three years out. Development takes time. Uh, we're here at the very first step. Nothing is a guaranteed given at this point, but we're here making that first application, the first step to be annexed and zoned. Um, I've got a, a brief kind of outline of our schedule. You know, first, I wanted to mention that, um, we're very happy and, and, and welcome to have a community meeting to hear, you know, in a, in a less formal setting from the community about concerns. Um, so we're gonna extend that, um, opportunity or offering to the community, uh, if we're able to move forward on this project. We have other steps along the way where we're certainly gonna need the community's input. Zoning and permitting, you know, we're at the very first step in the process. That's a twelve-to-eighteen-month process to get, uh, drawings and construction plans approved. Site development takes another, you know, twelve to eighteen months, and then there's easily two years of vertical construction timeline. So, uh, when you look at it in the broader, uh, scale of schedule, these homes are not gonna be occupied and sold i- until around the time that some of these traffic improvements that are being considered and designed and, and built, uh, will come online. So, uh, we hope that you'll take that in, into consideration and not slow down this very first step in the process. Allow us to get, uh, through the annexation and zoning, uh, and work with the city on this project that is kind of a, uh, a, a very logical expansion. It's, again, in your, uh, comprehensive plan designated for this use. It's in your urban growth boundary. It's a project that can build, um, some improvements that are needed. It can dedicate, uh, public land, or dedicate land for the public to use for your Parks and Rec Department. And again, just consider that schedule long-term. We're, we're two to three years out of, um, selling the first home here, so we just ask that you consider all these things, uh, and we request, uh, your approval tonight. We appreciate your time, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Planning Commission, any questions by anyone? All right, we have a, a group.
Ma'am, right now, this is the planning commission's time to ask him questions.
Yeah, remember all the questions you all have or comments you've made. We'll hopefully see these people ask those questions of this man right here. Okay? So first on the agenda is Todd. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you for, uh, being here, and thank you for the comments tonight. Let me speak just from, uh, somebody probably sitting on that side of the equation. I live on Stop Thirty, and I, I know exactly what you're, you're dealing with in terms of traffic. It was a nightmare even getting here tonight, uh, from my home, so I certainly understand that. I've had a chance to go out to that area three or four times this weekend for different practices and things with my grandson, and I, I took the time to kind of drive it, look at, understand where the, the creek is, um, and also understand what Stop Thirty deals with and when it rains and, and, and all that. My rough count, uh, there are about thirty homes, give or take, depending on what you, you, you consider are homes or lots, that are on the, adjacent to the hundred-year floodplain. How's that gonna work? I mean, how are you gonna build that up? And my concern, you know, from, from the planning commission perspective is, I look at some of these as, is it gonna hurt or help some of the current problems that we've When I looked at the detailed plans, I think this hurts more than helps, uh, the current situation that we're all dealing with, with traffic. Now, one thing that wasn't mentioned, maybe one person mentioned schools. I reached out to one of the, the board members today, and I asked about Burrus Elementary, which I think most of the students would be zoned for Burrus. They're at eighty-plus percent capacity, and schools and, and road infrastructure are usually catching up to development in terms of space and needs. So I have a lot of concerns about this just from growing too fast and not allowing the infrastructure to keep pace with the needs of the, of the community. Schools being one, um, also just our first responders getting in and out of Stop Thirty. Drake's Creek, um, that's a nightmare. That is a nightmare. So, but let me, let me pivot back to the thirty homes that, that are in the back, that are adjacent to the floodplain. Can you kind of walk me through visually what you would do to prevent a flood risk to, on the other side of Avant Lane? That's what, I'm as concerned about that side of Avant Lane as I am your side of Avant Lane. What does that do to the flood risk? And what does that do to the actual, um, aesthetics of their neighborhood? Does it detract from the value of their neighborhood? And, and I'm, I'm worried about that. I, you know, I worry that if, if you move forward, or we move forward with this plan, it can detract from the value of the folks in Durham Farms and Autumn Creek, the eighteen-hundred homes that we're talking about. So I don't, I don't know if there's a magic number here or, um, a magic equation, but walk me through, if you could, um, some of those questions and concerns.
Sure. I, I heard your main concern being the stormwater.
Yeah.
Um, and if you wouldn't mind going back a couple slides to our site plan, um, as with any new development, the city and the state has very stringent requirements for how we address stormwater. And, you know, one of the benefits of, uh, development is that you're actually able to better capture and control stormwater. We're required to release what's called releasing at historic rates, which means that the rate at which water currently dumps off of Avant Lane flows across this undeveloped farm and, and into the creek has to be maintained. And so we're required to build water quality and stormwater detention ponds, which means they're not a pond with water, and they're an empty pond that's only used during, um, high-rain events. And, um, and again, it's, you know, you've got water that sheet flows off of Avant Lane, and, and some of it may come from Durham Farms. By building this new edge along Avant Lane, you know, a new curb and gutter to catch stormwater, new inlets to catch stormwater, same thing throughout this entire property. We put our site storm into our new ponds, new detention ponds, and we release at historic rates. In regards to your question about the hundred-year floodplain, you know, we're gonna, you know, we can't really touch or change grades beyond that line, but we will be building up our property to keep all of the proposed homes out of the floodplain and out of the flood elevations. And, um, that in conjunction with our storm ponds is what's gonna protect these homes and this community. There's, again, very, very stringent guidelines on how you can develop around the floodplain.
Commissioner Sylph Woods, you're next.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Um, just a couple of questions dealing with, uh, road infrastructure and traffic congestion. As I'm sure you heard, there's plenty of, um, worries about that from the community. So one of the main things, um, is, you know, when you're looking at the map, you see that, you know, you, you don't absolutely have to be mixed-use residential. You know, you could be adjacent and you're adjacent to, you know, SRPD, PD, SR, PDSR-1, so you could do PDSR-1. Did you give any consid- did you all give any consideration to reducing the density?
You know, we're, we're balancing the cost of development, uh, with the unit count. You know, it's kind of a, it's a delicate, uh, process there. You know, we, we did consider looking at, you know, a, a development in the county as well.
Right.
But, you know, we wanna be a partner with the city in this development and provide benefits along with the new development, so the things that I spoke about are things that we're able to do with this amount of density. You know, as I mentioned, we're at one-point-seven, the county is around one, so we're not double the amount of homes in the county, but we're not, you know, asking for, you know, an egregious amount of, um, density beyond what, what may be possible, uh, in the county. Um, you know, at this time, trying to match the, the upper-end lot sizes in Durham Farms, we're not doing the duplexes or the townhomes or the smaller, single-family lot sizes. We're trying to do the nicer, uh, nicer homes, uh, that you can find on the bigger lots in Durham Farms.
I understand. And it, just as a comment, though, it might be a little more palatable to the community and maybe, I mean, I don't speak for the full commission, but perhaps to the commission and maybe even BOMA, if you reduce the density with the understanding that the impact fee per lot would not be quite as much. Just something to consider. Another quick question, we're deal- dealing with traffic congestion. So as someone mentioned, um, that road, Avant Lane, is a park road. It's fifteen miles an hour. There are a few, you know, speed bumps and things along there. Will you all at any time be requesting that that become a non-park road and just a regular road with a speed limit of thirty, thirty-five, whatever that would be?
We would take, uh, planning and engineering staff's lead on that. They've directed us to build out a comparable street section to what Durham Farms did on portions of their side of Avant Lane, so we're building out that street section that was, um, given to us by planning staff.
I, I just have a hard time understanding how you're gonna add all these additional trips, but folks can only go fifteen miles an hour along there, and that, to me, just really screams of a lot of backup and congestion in an area that is already sort of dealing with a lot of problems in terms of infrastructure, and I think there was a, you know, roundabout that failed that probably should've gone through over there, would've helped some things, so. It's a problematic area, but that's why I was asking about the fifteen miles an hour.
Uh, we certainly wouldn't, uh, go in and advocate to raise the speed limit. We're proponents for safe, walkable streets, and that's why the, you know, the addition of the detached sidewalks and the street trees, um, and just the widening of the road to make it, make it safer, uh, is something that we're proposing.
It's just a long stretch for almost seven-hundred additional trips, and all those cars have to go fifteen miles an hour, so that's all. Thank you.
Understood.
I don't see any other commissioners in the queue. Oh, Keith, I see you in the queue. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to note that, uh, let's, uh, let's include the PowerPoint that the applicant had. We'll include that in the, in the record. Include that for that. And I just wanted to note, because, uh, the information on your PowerPoint and what you shared, there was some new additional information that wasn't in the packets, uh, that you shared, and I just kind of wanna pull that out, uh, just to, to make the planning commission aware of it, as well as for the record, uh, as we, as we move forward. Uh, one of those were, if I understood it right, you were saying you're going to pave the parking lot?
Yes, that was a, I believe, a comment from planning staff here in the last week that we agreed to.
And then you bought, you're voluntarily offering thirty-five-hundred, uh, per lot?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, and then, um, with the double garage doors versus a single, uh, you're, you're saying, uh, gonna have enhancements on those windows and, uh, more carriage-style double garage doors?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note that.
Next in the queue, I saw Charles.
Okay. Uh, a couple of questions. Advent Road, the right-of-way, is it in the, uh, right-of-way in the county or is it in the city?
Answer it. I'm pretty sure it's in the, uh, that portion. Go ahead, Stephen.
I'm, I'm pretty certain that the, uh, Avant is, is in city right-of-way. Uh, I, I think the county, county property is just to the, to the west. That's my understanding of the right-of-way.
Okay, so it's a, it is a city street?
Yes.
And one of my questions about it being in the county and their zoning, and their zoning allows one unit per acre, I believe you said. Does the county have a cluster provision so that they could calculate their one per acre and cluster them all out of the floodplain? Does anybody know?
They had that? That might be something the applicant may be aware of, that, if you've looked into that.
Yes, they, they still do have a cluster provision in their zoning ordinance.
So with the clustering provision under the county, you could still get about the same number of units?
Close. And it's, you know, it's just worth mentioning that the benefits that we hope to provide with this project, if we're given permission to come into the city, we wouldn't do so if we were in the county, because we'd be talking to a different board. So we try to be intentional about the things that we offered to let the community and, you know, the governing bodies of, of the city know that, you know, we're, we're here to partner, uh, with you all and provide benefit along with this project.
Well, I think your voluntary donation impact fee is commendable, but if you would do a whole lot more work from all the way, one end to the other of Advent, it would make it a little bit more palatable, because if you were asking for a high density, my answer would be hell no. But since you are, you, you're really providing for the density of the area, something that is comparable and a pretty good development, I think. But the traffic is the issue, and I think everybody up here may be struggling with that one issue as to how that will impact the neighborhood. And I realize you, so your timeline is pushing way on out there, and maybe your timeline on the improvements to Advent and maybe some that the city can do, we can address, or some of the traffic issues directly related to your development maybe can be somewhat mitigated. Yeah, yeah, I'm ready for some more, to hear some more discussions. I don't know what I'm, how I'm gonna vote yet.
Commissioner Martin, you're in the queue.
Thank you for bringing this project to us. I think what you're proposing and the development and the quality's wonderful. You voluntary fees that, that the developers offering is wonderful, plus a lot of the upgrades. I, I wanted you to know that, um, because I appreciate it. I love the single-family homes. I'm gonna vote no, but I wanted you to, to know that I really like this development. The reason I'm gonna vote no circles back to what the two aldermen that spoke at the beginning, uh, had to say. We are desperately trying to take care of our traffic and our infrastructure and stormwater, and so we did something very drastic. We did a moratorium to give us time to do that. Um, and I know you're probably saying, two years out, I would love to see this exact project come back after the nine months, 'cause I would love to support it, because I trust, uh, Alderman Robertson, um, Alderman Evans, and, and a lot of the others, um, to push to address those issues during the nine months that we have. So, uh, again, I appreciate you bringing this to us.
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner Evans, you're in the queue. Go ahead.
I, I don't know where to start. I moved here thirty years ago, and, and I would like for Hendersonville to be like it was thirty years ago, but never in my wildest imagination did I think that it would. ago, but never in my wildest imagination did I think that it would. I've watched people build houses beside my house. I would hate for somebody to tell me that I can't use my house now. I can't sell it. I can't transfer it to someone else. I do share the concerns about the floodplain. Since the beginning of time, Mother Nature has been trying to level our planet, and part of our topsoil is down in New Orleans now, probably with houses on it. So, that's going to keep on. We're not struggling with stormwater. We're managing stormwater. We do it every time we look at another project here. Our staff knows what they're doing. Our engineers know what they're doing, and we try to manage this the best way we can. So, to get to the bottom line, could we bring up that aerial view again that we had earlier? Other than, other than stormwater, what's the difference between one side of that road and the other side of that road? And why would we tell folks that they can't build on this side of the road, but on the other side of the road, we have a similar development? It's not in our purview to do that without a finding of fact that there is some sort of damage that we just can't live with. So, personally, I can't find that fact, but thank you.
No other commissioners in the queue. So, Charles, oh, sorry. Barry, you lit it up.
Well, I was just waiting to see.
Okay. Go ahead, Barry.
The, we talked about paving the parking area at the rugby field. How big will that parking lot be, and how many cars will be in that park? Paved parking stalls will be in that?
I should know the answer to that specifically, but looking at that, it's about 50 or 60 parking spaces.
So, 50 to 60?
Yeah.
How many typ, do we know, and this is a staff question, I guess, how many cars are typically there on a given practice or game day?
I don't think we have that information. I do know when there is a heavy event there, that people are parking all up and down Avant and into the Durham Farms neighborhood. So, I'm not sure how many cars that is, but...
This does double the size of the current parking facility, if that helps. It's, we're adding a parking lot the same size of the existing one.
Okay. The, has there been a traffic study done, or did I hear you guys say that, or there has not been one done?
When we started this project, it was right at the end of the school season, and so that will be a requirement of the next phase of the development. And, you know, there could very well be off-site improvements that are recognized during the traffic study that we are, you know, if it's turn lane or if it's, you know, other improvements. So, that during the site development plan phase is, or the final development plan phase is when that is specifically required.
If your traffic study requires that there be improvements to the road, will that be in addition to the $3,500 fee that's being committed tonight?
Yes.
Did, did I hear you say you, that you're planning to improve that roadway or rebuild that road?
Right now, Durham Farms has developed part of a half-section. They've got improvements at all their intersections where houses front to Avant Lane. They've built the full section. There's some little missing pieces of widening and curb, but what we're proposing to do is, along the entire frontage of our development, widen the road to the full half-section, build curb and gutter, and build a detached sidewalk.
So, I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly. We're going from an old country farm road to a new, modern, curb-and-guttered road?
That's correct.
Okay. This is a staff question. The $3,500 fee that's per lot, does that money just go into the general fund and, yeah, we got it, but nobody knows where it goes to? Or can it be escrowed to go towards improvements to help these fine folks here?
Yeah, it's a, it's a new thing that it just, that we're just aware of today with the $3,500, but in the motion should include these things that I called out earlier. Plus, normally that wouldn't, which we're not negotiating, the planning commission is not negotiating with the developer on an off-site fee. That's really something for BOMA. But just to further clarify it, I would, I would guess it would, might need to also add that that would go to improvements that would benefit the transportation system out in that area.
In that area.
Yeah, which could be Avant, could be, could be Drake's, Drake's Creek.
Because I know in previous times, people would pay stuff, and it would just kind of, they paid it, but the money just kind of went into this big general fund, and no one ever knew. So, it can go towards, we legally can say this money has to be escrowed to go towards this?
Yes. And currently, it hadn't really been spelled out, but, you know, and BOMA could change how that functions with the $3,500, but unless something separate was set, clarified, it would just be paying $3,500 when you get your building permit.
We would love to see all those dollars go to Avant Lane.
Yeah, so...
So, BOMA could come back and say, instead of paying $3,500 as they get their permit, we want $200,000, which is what that money would equal, and it's going to go straight to improvements to...
They could clarify that, yes, sir.
But that, that's their purview, not ours.
That, that would be correct on that particular issue, yeah.
Did I hear you say that you're going to add another alleyway than what we saw?
No, we're just changing the type of homes that are on the opposite side of that alleyway. We had previously proposed that the only alley homes would be the ones facing Avant, and staff had requested that we make the homes on both sides of that alley be alley-loaded garages, and we've agreed to do that.
So, the, the homes that face Avant, if I'm going to visit them, I would pull up and park in the alleyway, correct? Or where would I park?
They're, they will have driveways with parking in them. There will also be on-street parking available, because we don't have any driveways in front of those homes, so...
But their home will, the front of their home will look out to the street?
Correct.
Okay. See.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerr, I saw you were in the queue. You still?
No, he answered my question. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions before we move on? Any other comments? Any clarifications? Charles? You wanted more discussion. Did you get enough?
Can I make one more? Can I ask one more question?
Yes, go right ahead, Barry. Maybe it'll help Commissioner Charles here.
To Director Free, what are our legal obligations when someone wants to bring property into the city? Do we have a legal obligation if they meet all of our requirements to do this? Or can we say, we're just sorry, we're not interested at the time?
No, we're not legally obligated to annex. Let me kind of explain, let me get a little closer, make sure everybody can hear me okay. The way the, the way the process works is, this evening, the planning commission, you have before you right now, pending a vote to move forward with a recommendation. It would be a recommendation for really two things, and we've just kept them combined, because the applicant has requested annexation, but it's annexation contingent upon getting the zoning. If they can't get the zoning, then they don't want the annexation. And so, they're coupled together, so it'll be one vote that would be, you know, would be like a motion to approve the plan of services and annexation, to recommend that to BOMA, as well as to recommend the combined development plan to BOMA as well. And then that moves on to BOMA, goes to the general committee next week, to BOMA General Committee, and then that moves on to full BOMA, and it gets a little bit confusing, because it's actually two resolutions. The first resolution that goes to BOMA is the plan of services that would be, you all would be acting on to say, hey, yeah, we're, we're good with the plan of services or we're not good, you know, with it. And then BOMA will take action. There'll be a public hearing on the plan of services, and then at that point, if, if they adopt that, then at the next BOMA meeting, then there'll be another resolution, and then that's the annexation resolution. And then they vote on the, on the annexation. At the same time that this annexation is going through, the combined development plan is going through as well, so... And there's a timing issue where the annexation would need to take place right before the vote for the combined development plan, the way the timing worked. That kind of explained it a little bit. But the, there's nothing on the city's behalf to, to have to, because someone asked for annexation, you know, there's nothing, you know, impeding on the city that you have to, have to follow through with that. So, anytime somebody asks for annexation, we look at all the things that we, we do look at and determine. There's many times, this one is a little bit different because of the proximity and it's in our future land use plan. It's definitely clearly within our urban growth boundary, but we have a lot of requests that I get calls for, people that are closer out to Long Hollow Pike, and they want to be annexed, and that's not something that we're really interested in, because, you know, as we discussed, plan of service, and really while plan of services are, that's saying, here's how we're going to serve that little section out there off of Avant. In this particular case, there's really nothing different we're going to do. We're already serving all the way around it. We go all the way out to Drake's Point. So, there's not necessarily any new services that we're not providing to citizens out there that we couldn't provide with existing staffing. But if you're looking at something that's further out, like, you know, near Long Hollow Pike, and it's, you know, kind of a non-contiguous annexation that isn't even attached to the city, then that'd be a little bit different. And then it'd be like, oh, gosh, now we're looking at having to do a new fire station, and we're going to have to add more policemen, or, you know, we're going to have to add other services. That's not necessarily the case, case right here, but there's no, there's no reason that the city has to take an annexation. This is just something that's consideration, and this is a recommendation from the planning commission, and then it's going to go to BOMA, the elected officials, and then they make the final, the final determination. Does that help, Barry? You can explain?
I just wanted to make sure there was not a state law somewhere that's going to end up violating one of them.
No, not, not that I'm aware of. No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, no further discussion, so now we're to the business side. Entertain a motion, if anyone has one to offer.
If you're going to do a chance to ask?
Again, your comments earlier were what fueled these people to make their questions of him, so we're hoping all of your questions were answered by this back-and-forth dialogue. If not, there's no further...
I think if the members are skewed...
Well, okay, there's no further opportunity for you to speak directly at this time.
There'll be other opportunities.
Now, you did hear him mention that he'll have community meetings in the future if it moves forward, one way or the other, either in the county or in the city.
I think the number skewing would have an effect on you guys.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're back to the business side, so any motions from anyone up here? Anybody going to offer a motion? Okay, remember, on the motion, it also has to include a few of these things that Keith had brought up.
There are nine items there. I, the comment was made that this piece of property is going to develop. It's going to happen. And I kind of agree with Mr. Evans. You know, we proved it on one side, but we're going to tell the other side, no. I mean, this may be a failed motion, but we need to make a decision of some kind. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve and recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the annexation. We approve the list of the services provided, community services that are going to be provided, and we include items one through nine on the comments as far as the finding of facts that are listed.
Can I add one thing? Number four, they've already excluded from those.
I, I don't know how, I'm okay with the developer doing that, because I understand where, where they're coming from, and I could have, I have no problem with deleting item number four from the planning staff. Not anything against the staff. They do a good job of providing architectural services to development for the community, but I have no problem with agreeing with the developer on that one.
Okay.
And I will make that motion.
And also, in your motion, can you mention the fact of, that the, that the developer is also offering to pave the parking lot, that $3,500 lot?
Yes. We, well, that we accept his, and it'd be monies to be used to the benefit of the community that he's serving there. Yeah, that's okay with paving it if they want it, but personally, I think you should leave it as a, an impervious surface. We're talking about stormwater. Make it an impervious surface, but if you and the staff agree, and the city wants it paved, I'm okay with that.
And also, one more finding of fact, that it's in compliance with the future land use development.
And it is, right. And it is, yes, it will be in compliance. I'll make the motion. May I get a second? We'll go from there and make a decision.
I have a discussion point before we...
Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, so, so, I want to go back to those nine questions, or those nine statement of facts that you mentioned, Mr. Hasty. I read these as questions, not as a set of facts, and I think if you read into the questions, the set of facts will conclude that some of these are concerns that we have about the development.
Hey, Todd?
Yes.
Are you looking at page eight, or are you looking at page seven?
These nine here.
Go to the next page.
Go to the next page. Those are the ones that are the statement of facts.
Okay. I got you.
So, under the staff...
Yeah, good. So, that, that's good, because I made a couple of notes there, too.
Okay.
When you say there are no significant adverse effects, and this is for the planning staff, help me get there. I mean, I drive, I drive the traffic every day. I see the overcrowding. I see the cars parked all up and down Avant Lane. Where, what is your definition of adverse impact?
Hank, what it, what it would be in this process with the planning commission making the recommendation, and then BOMA doing the final action on it, would just be their determination on weighting, because every, every development is going to have some adverse impact. It's just weighing out, is the adverse impact, which any development's going to have, is it, is it outweighing any community benefit? And it's just trying to determine, you know, what that, what that is.
So, yours is not a conclusion, concluding on fact. You're, you're stating facts. You're not trying to make a, draw a conclusion for BOMA, is that...
No, that's cor, that's correct. So, this is just, this is for each planning commission member to kind of contemplate for themselves on, on what this is, and then what those, what those nine items are, are questions to kind of ask yourself as you're reviewing this, to kind of, as a guide, but those aren't, those are just the, to help you in, in reviewing kind of your determination on what it would be.
So, it frames the facts. It frames at least your, your thought process, or at least some of the things you should consider. And again, I'll, I'll let it go at this point, other than to say, I have concern about the development. I'm voting no. I, I see the impact of this, and I see the future impact. Give it one, two, three years, still going to be a problem. So, again, that's my last comment on this, but I just wanted to raise those. Thanks.
Thank you. So, we have a motion in front of us. I have not heard a second as of yet. I've heard a second now. So, now we will go, I'm sorry, sir, at this point, at this point, sir, at this point, at this, at this point, sir, it is purely up to the commission, and it's not including you.
Because 1,850 homes really, really is about 1,000.
Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Now, we will go to the electronic vote.
Motion to approve, pass with five yeses and three nos.
Yeah, let me explain, so, so like on that, on Todd, on the, and what you're... That's okay.
So now we have to go to the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, hey, Todd? So, so, so on what you were asking, what you were asking a while ago, the, the, that list that Zachary had right there, uh, that comes out of the zoning ordinance. So that guidance comes out of the zoning ordinance, that isn't a list that we're making up as staff? Yeah, that's what, I just, I just wanna make sure. Yeah, totally, so, thank you.
Okay.
Sir, sir, can you go outside into that conference room and take that conversation up? Thank you. It's right out there on your left-hand side. All right, next. Item number nine, zoning ordinance text amendments. Lead planning staff Keith Free, would you like to speak to...
Yes. This is on the zoning ordinance, yeah. All right, so we'll go through, we've got all these different, um, updates of the zoning ordinance, and everyone has, uh, had, uh, the draft changes, uh, and then we have an executive summary, uh, as well, to kinda go through some of the major changes. I'm gonna do this fairly quickly, but grab my attention if there's one that I land on, uh, that you want, uh, to go in a little bit deeper on. And then this is the zoning ordinance, and after this, uh, it's a subdivision regulations, it's a totally separate document, but this one is just gonna be the, uh, uh, the zoning ordinance. And I'll just start with item number one. Uh, this was just minor grammatic, grammatical, um, uh, and organizational errors throughout the document. Uh, it was a lot of just, uh, things, uh, that were just misspelled or incorrectly placed, uh, and there's a lot of those throughout the entire document, and so a lot of different cleaning up. Uh, the item number two, uh, the rules for construction of language were added. Uh, we added some things to explain, uh, when there were questions about definitions or questions about how we're interpreting something, just some clear language that could help, uh, clarify that, uh, if there was something that was just a little bit vague, so it's, uh, it's kinda, it, I think it'll be helpful, uh, in the future as we're looking at, at, at different things. Uh, item number three, at...
Did you see that? The add-ons to...
Yeah, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do, yes, let me speak to that. We're gonna go through the executive summary. Since we did the draft, I've found several things we also need to go ahead, uh, I'm, I'm proposing to do, and I'm gonna go through those after I get through, get through, uh, this list.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, you know, uh, when we're through there, if there's something that we didn't cover, uh, that anybody has a question about, or any proposed change someone would have, uh, we can go into that as well. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next one is item number three at two-point-six-point-one. Uh, this is gonna give, uh, the, me, the authority, the direct, planning director, the authority to correct minor errors, and, uh, gives me the ability to correct these errors and, uh, within the, within the approved document. Any errors that I find, there might be misspellings or just very, very obvious things, uh, and there'd be a process in which if, if something did get changed, uh, then it would be noted in the document and documented, you know, clearly within the document. This'll save us from bringing something back if there's just some obvious, uh, obvious error, uh, that occurred. Also, on number, uh, item number four, three-three-point-two, published notice, uh, we've got new requirements, uh, from the state, uh, that require, uh, when there are, bless you, when there are zoning, uh, text amendments or zoning map amendments that require a twenty-one-day notice instead of a fifteen-day notice, uh, so we corrected that throughout the document. Uh, three-point-three-four, on table number two, uh, we updated annexation to reflect, uh, the new state notice requirements, uh, this annexation that we went through this evening and are going through that process, there are new, uh, requirements, uh, on notice, uh, and, uh, this is just making sure that we clarify that within our document. Also, um, three-point-five, on item number six, vesting, this is clarifying the vesting rules, and what this is, is currently, the state has vesting laws, and the vesting laws are triggered unless this, unless a, a community in their zoning ordinance clearly dictates how the vesting is to operate. It functions where, when you, uh, get a planned development, vesting starts, when you get construction plans, vesting starts, when you get a preliminary plat, vesting starts, when you get, uh, uh, final plat, vesting starts. So it's got all these starts and stops with vesting that make it very confusing, and just keeps extending things out. And so what we've done here is, we clearly defined, uh, where vesting starts, and for a project, then we're saying that it starts, uh, with a preliminary development plan, and that's when it starts, because you've got site plans and all kinds of other things, you know, following it, and then, but the clock starts, uh, earlier on. Uh, so that's kind of what that, what that whole process is. This cleans this up a lot better, and it doesn't leave these just never-ending, uh, vesting issues, uh, they don't just keep on going and going, and, uh, through the protection of vesting. Although with our changes, everything has the proper vesting that the state law allows, so we're not doing anything that's contrary to state law. We are conforming with it, we're just declaring what, what we're calling, uh, vesting and how that, those vesting rules work. Four-point-one, uh, point-three, violations, it's just something the city attorney requested for clarifications. Uh, when we cite something, which we do often, uh, uh, eventually, it can be cited daily, so if we have an issue, we might cite it once, and then if we keep having the issue, then we might just start citing it every day. And this is just clarifying, we already have the authority to do that, but this is just codifying it, uh, within this, uh, within this document. Uh, six-two, table three, uh, this is correcting any discrepancies, uh, that we had in that table. Also, it's adding outdoor storage, uh, areas and smoke shops. Currently, uh, outdoor storage is allowed, uh, in commercial and industrial and heavy commercial zones, but it's not really clarified, so basically, there's a lot of opportunity that you could do outdoor storage in a commercially zoned, uh, lot, uh, without even a building on it. And, uh, and so we kinda ran across that in something here, uh, a couple of months ago, and so this kind of complete, fixes that loophole, and it allows outdoor storage only in heavy commercial and industrial. You can still have outdoor storage, but you need a building and everything, you can't just do outdoor storage, you know, on a commercial, commercial lot. This hadn't been a problem, but we did run up to a case just here recently that's, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's doing that. Also, smoke shops, so this is smoke shop, tobacco shops, vape, uh, vape shops, uh, we're pulling that out currently, that's just allowed as retail use in a commercial zone. And then what we're doing with, with this change is we're separating it out and, uh, creating it by its own definition for these types of shops, and then we're limiting, uh, to where those can be located, and they can be located, I believe, in general commercial and hu, and heavy commercial, uh, but only with a conditional use permit, and we've put some limits so that you can't have a, uh, a smoke shop within a thousand feet of another smoke shop. All existing vape shops or smoke shops that already exist, they'll be grandfathered in and non-conforming and can continue to operate, but this would affect any new, uh, types of, types of these things. Uh, part of the reason for this is, we really don't have that issue here yet, uh, been in a lot of other communities, there's just a congregation, it seems, of, of those types of, of shops, uh, that end up, you know, once a couple go in, then there's three or four, and, uh, you know, that, uh, and those things, uh, have, uh, have regulations as well, uh, state regulations associated with them, so we felt like it was appropriate, uh, to call those out. Uh, six-two, note thirteen, uh, clarified the max vacation rental per lot. Um, it's fairly clear that you can only have one vacation rental per lot, uh, in the areas where they are allowed, but the language wasn't as clear as I wanted it, and this just makes it very clear that you can only have one per lot, uh, so it just kinda clarifies, clarifies that. Uh, six-two, note fourteen, uh, adding some more clarifying notes about outdoor material stor, storage, uh, kind of associated with what I talked about, talked about earlier. Uh, six-three, table four, this incre, this is, uh, increase in minimum lot sizes and width, uh, in the SR-three zone, dockside neighborhood zone, uh, and also the multifamily zone as well. So what we're doing here, we've talked, uh, we've had a few projects in SR-three and multifamily, uh, where we talked about the, um, the number of lots that we're be able to create out of one lot was a little more than what the planning commission thought, you know, maybe should be allowed, and what this does, it increases the minimum lot size, uh, and probably even more importantly, it increases the minimum lot width, uh, in all those instances. And in multifamily specifically, uh, you can do single-family, uh, but where currently you could do single-family on a five-thousand-square-foot lot, then, uh, with the new requirements, uh, it would be seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot. So this would make a, make a pretty good difference, uh, on some of those things. Six-three, note nine, this is just further clarifying for HPRs, uh, horizontal property regimes, and then remember what those do, the horizontal property regimes, uh, they allow, um, uh, for our zoning requirements, even though horizontal property regimes where you don't have to, you don't have to go through the subdivision process, when you're dividing property, you could do it all as one lot, uh, we do put the standards, uh, that you could still do that, but you have to meet our, uh, bulk standards for that zone. And so, this is something that in, we're not aware of any other community that's done this, we did this, I think about three years ago, uh, when we, when we made this change, uh, but this protects from a lot of the things, specifically, probably a good example is in Davidson County, uh, where a lot of the kinda tall skinnies, that's how a lot of that got created, was using horizontal property regime, and there's just not an opportunity to, to do that level of density here, using that as a loophole, uh, to do it. We've kind of tightened and closed that, that particular loophole. Seven-point-two, table five, uh, this is, uh, this is again to correct some disparities, uh, discrepancies with outdoor storage area and smoke shop, uh, on that particular table, similar to that other, other table. Seven-point-two, note twenty-five, uh, clarifying parking lots and parking structures, just making it clear, if you have a two-story building, uh, that the first floor, uh, could not be a, uh, parking, uh, parking lot. Uh, this has to do with some things with residential, uh, in, in some of the different Seven-point-four, table six, uh, this is increasing the lot size and the minimum pervious in dockside neighborhood. I talked about the increase a little earlier there in dockside neighborhood. Uh, currently, the minimum pervious area is zero percent, and we're increasing that to ten percent. Uh, that was a little, zero percent was a little bit, little bit low on that. Eight-point-four, general standards, just added language that needs to be removed from the draft, that's just getting rid of some things of very low impact. Uh, the next, the next item, reconfigured and rewrote, uh, eight-point-nine for clarity, uh, ten-point-three-point-two, uh, we, we kept the same language, but we just moved it around, uh, within the document on that. Ten-point-three-four and ten-point-three-five, uh, this is language concerning daycare centers' character, uh, that it, um, yeah, what this is, is that if you had a daycare center, uh, in a residential neighborhood, that it would, uh, that it should follow the architectural design of a residential area so that it wouldn't look commercial, uh, because daycare centers can be allowed, uh, with a conditional use permit in a residential area. Okay? Then we'll go to this next page. Those next two, ten-point-three-seven and ten-point-three-eight, uh, that just has to do with, uh, adding language for wastewater for, uh, motor vehicle service stations and kennels. It's just, uh, some things in there, like, what are you gonna do with the kenn, with the waste from the kennel when you spray all that off? The same thing with, uh, uh, motor vehicle service station, when you, when you hose off the floor and everything, where does that go? And that's really just a water quality issue. And then, ten-point-three-point-one-six, on smoke shops, that's just adding, uh, add the use with regulations, uh, that's what I talked about a while ago, and that's just getting into all those specifics. This next change, uh, number twenty-three, ten-point-four-point-one-point-five-B, uh, this is a big, this is a big change. Uh, this is on accessory buildings, we're proposing to increase the square footage of residential accessory buildings. It, it's not for ADUs, this is just like a detached garage or an outbuilding, uh, so if you're under fifteen-thousand-square-foot lot, going from eight-hundred-square-foot to a thousand, if it's fifteen-thousand to third, to under thirty, going from twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred square feet, from thirty to less than an acre, going from fifteen-hundred square feet to eighteen-hundred, and if you have more than an acre, going from eighteen-hundred square foot to two-thousand. One of the reasons it drove this from the staff standpoint, we just had a lot of people going for these items, if they're over a hundred or two-hundred square foot, you know, going to the BZA to get relief, so they could, uh, you know, make a little bit larger building. Uh, and then, looking at it, it seemed reasonable to increase these, this just gives people a little bit more opportunity, uh, to do a larger outbuilding in their rear yard, uh, but it's, the increases aren't excessive, uh, but the staff feels, these are reasonable. And then, we feel like it probably would reduce the number of requests that go to the BZA, uh, on these items as well. And most of, most of those items, if I'm correct, Timothy, uh, most of those items that go to the BZA related to this, uh, they actually end up getting approved in, in most cases, unless it's really excessive. This is a big change, ten-point-four-point-nine and ten-point-four-ten, uh, EV charging station requirements. Timothy, uh, uh, did all the work on this one. You know, we didn't really have anything, um, with EV charging stations, it's kinda slowed down, it's kinda hot and heavy, and now it's EV, for some reason, I don't know why. So we were concerned because we had some that actually got approved that we just weren't crazy about, and the ones over there, I mean, it looks okay, but, uh, the example is, the one in front of Chicken Salad Chick, the Tesla over there, it's a good-looking charging station, but the location of it is just not, I mean, it's right out there in our beautiful parking lot with the landscaping, and I think that came before the planning commission to work out, you know, some of the issues we had to work out with that. What this does, uh, for any future charging stations, it pushes it back up on the property, so there's not really an opportunity to put it, you know, way out front-facing in the parking lot. Uh, it tries to get it beside buildings and things like that, so I think this could be, uh, could be beneficial. And, you know, part of those, even if they look good, I mean, they're, they're monstrous structures.
So, if it's a shopping center, where do you put it? I mean, we, we don't want it towards the street, but...
Yeah, you...
...the tenants are not gonna want it at their front door either.
So, yeah, for, for, uh, if you have a big shopping center with large acreage, like where the Tesla facility is, you can have it there, but it's gonna push it, like, like that Tesla facility would be pushed closer to the building, further away from that, it's a private street, but still considered a street. So they, they could still do it, but it's gonna push it deeper. And then for shower lots, like your typical outlots, um, it means that you can, you can do a small charging facility, at least that's six ports or less, and is, you know... And is, you know, if it's within those dimensional constraints, it's got to be fifty feet off of that street. If you want to do a larger one, if you've got the room, you might could do it on the, you know, behind the building. Closer to the to the rear property line.
So, so under the new zoning ordinance is the Tesla at Chick-fil-A. Or at Chicken Salad Chick would be pushed closer to Chicken Salad Chick.
Correct.
How much closer? Because.
Well, it's got to, it's got to be within, within a hundred feet of the front of the building. But it's also got to be at least eighty feet from that street right of way. So if, and I I didn't, I didn't do a case analysis of that of that particular one. But there there's some happy medium there where they could squeeze that in.
Okay.
It's it's got to meet those, both that, both of those constraints.
To Keith's point, thank you Timothy, to Keith's point, I don't think we're going to see a barrage of of permit requests. For charging stations for the next two or three years at least. But if I'm a tenant in that shopping center. Then a lot of my parking is going to become further distant from my door potentially. I mean, that Tesla, that's a big chunk, that took up how many parking places?
I think that took up about two, eight or ten.
Yeah, so if that got moved closer, if I'm Chicken Salad Chick, I'm out there waving a croissant at somebody saying, wait a minute. You're you're blocking, you're blocking access, and maybe that's between the tenant and the landlord, but I. That one just seems like it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to me to.
And this does, this requires, for for a larger type facility like the Tesla. It does require site plan approval, so it still has to come before you all, and you're going to have opportunity to to look at that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Timothy. Yeah, there'd be, there'd be a little bit of flexibility with that. All right, ten point four one one, this is reorganizing some things about fences and just making it a little bit, a little bit clearer. It didn't, it didn't really change, change anything. Ten point five one on table twelve, this is just, for tennis courts, basketball courts are similar. In looking over this, we we were removing the rear yard encroachment. On that table, it allowed a basketball court or a tennis court to be right up against the lot line. So we hadn't really had a problem with that, but we just kind of caught it, so to remove, to remove that. Eleven point two point seven point two, the chart parking dimensions. This is just something, just with the the math of how the angles of the parking work. And we just corrected some things that were not correct on that chart. Eleven point four point ten, this is on buffer yards. This is just clarifying what we're already doing as a staff in dockside neighborhoods. Because dockside neighborhood is a true mixed-use development, so we don't want to buffer mixed uses. Residential and commercial within a mixed-use neighborhood will end up, you know, having twenty-foot buffers all over the place. And, you know, really not maximizing that true mixed-use nature of that area. Eleven point four point one one three, outdoor storage area. It's just talking about the buffer area clarification. If you have that, then it's, there was kind of some ambiguity about how much buffer was required. We felt that there needed to be buffer there, so we just clarified that. Eleven point four point one two, tree preservation, this is just clarifying planning locations of. Was this the one Timothy that about if we couldn't do it, then doing it up on the property? Yeah, this was one where we're in the process right now of doing some plans. Specifically, right now, we're doing Rockland Road. So there's some things where we're doing some beautification plans on that area for trees. So if there's an occasion, we don't have room, or there might not be room for a development. To put their trees on their property, we might work out something to put it on the right of way, or vice versa. If we're doing a project, then when we work with the property owner, we may put our tree on 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 their property. In order to do, on some of these tight spaces, to do these beautification projects, so. And twelve point two point one, we added dockside neighborhood, single-family residents under design review. We need to make sure we're looking at what those, what those are, there was a little bit of a loophole in that. Table sixteen at two, twelve point two point four, increase the percentage of brick or stone in dockside neighborhood. Currently, it's zero percent, we want to increase that to thirty percent. And the idea with thirty percent is in that'll, that'll get the, at least the lower half of buildings in dockside neighborhood. That would be brick or stone, and that's kind of what that is. Right now, there is no, no requirement.
Keith, let me ask you on that, the brick requirement, does that have to be in the front or back, or does it matter?
It needs to be every side.
Every side, okay.
Yeah, thirty percent on every side, unless unless the planning commission grants a waiver.
Oh, okay.
Also, that next one, twelve point three point six point two A, that's clarifying materials. We're on dockside neighborhood, we're just clarifying that we're also allowing the hardy board. As a, as an approved material in dockside neighborhood. And part of that is that nature of things will be residential, then it'll be commercial, then it could be commercial, residential. Trying to keep a more residential character, but yet still commercial, but not. Not any kind of excessive commercial look, you know, within that area. So this gives, gives that opportunity to do that. The next thing as well, twelve point three point six point five A, the glazing percentage in dockside neighborhood. Decreasing that from the typical sixty percent that we already have, and that's typically what we have in our commercial zones, down to thirty percent. It's just within that mixed neighborhood, we're going to have older houses and, you know, houses that get built that then get converted to commercial. And that a thirty percent glazing in the front is more compatible than a storefront glazing for that type of, type of use. Chapter thirteen, that was completely reorganized, that was the sign ordinance. Everything, I'll I'll call out some things that changed here as I move move down. But generally, we totally moved everything around. It was just kind of all over the place, it didn't really flow really well. So there's a lot of changes to it, but it's mostly just moving around what we, you know, what we already have. And I'll call out some of those things that are, that are a little bit different. Let me see, but not right now. Yeah, yeah, I will, yeah, I will. Table eighteen, we added the dockside neighborhood allowance up to eighty square foot. So we had this thing where if you had a multi-tenant, then you can do a larger sign. But you can only do the larger sign if you had at least one point five acres. So we found that there were a lot of properties, yeah, that were multi-tenant, that we want them to get them all on one sign. But this was keeping that from happening. And we ran into this on our sign grant program, that it was kind of an obstacle as well. And this change, this change might encourage some folks to do a new sign. Versus some of the older kind of signage that's out there. Thirteen point five point one six, increase the distance from three eighty-six to, from two hundred feet to two thousand feet. What this is, is there's really only two properties that that could meet the requirements of this. This is the artistic, commercial artistic signage. And really, it's only something that I believe the streets of Indian Lake and maybe Glenbrook Village, or Glenbrook, you know, could meet. It's the idea that they could have an artistic sign. We already had that on there, but it had to be within two hundred feet of three eighty-six. And by moving this to two thousand, specifically for the streets of Indian Lake, you know, where they've got their sign. They can't really even fit all their things on their, on their sign, but they're maxed out. But then what this would give the opportunity is, if the streets of Indian Lake wanted to come up with a sign to replace the one they have. They could come to the planning commission and go through this process to do it. And right now, they can't do that because there's the limit of two hundred feet from three eighty-six, so. And it doesn't mean we want to necessarily give it, it just depends on, you know, if they propose something. But I don't have anything that they're proposing, you know, currently. But the one that we have in there that we changed a few years ago, it was in there because they wanted to do something. And I think they even came and got a site plan approved for that big sign out on three eighty-six. So we'll see what happens with with that. And this is something from an economic development standpoint. You know, we want to do things where we're, we're balancing our our regulations, and specifically in this case. Our sign regulations to make sure we're keeping the bar high for what our community looks like and the appearance and all of that. But we also want to be sensitive to, from the economic side with the businesses, to do something fair. Especially with larger developments, commercial developments, you know, that have a, have a lot of businesses in them. Number thirty-eight, thirteen point eight point three, this is a change of use, requires new conforming signage when use changes. This is something on the add-ons, I'm going to talk about on my add-ons. I'm pulling back from this, so on my add-ons, I'm pulling back from the intensity at which we were proposing this. What this was, and I'm I'm going to request that we drop it back. What it was, it was going to be, hey, anytime the property changed hands and you had a grandfathered sign. They had to replace the sign, which we could do, but I think it was just reaching too far. So my add-on to change this would be anytime a business changes, truly changes use. Not from a restaurant to a restaurant, but from a restaurant to a dentist office or whatever. Then you've got to get rid of your non-conforming sign, and you've got to get a conforming sign, ground sign specifically. It could be wall signs too. And so that's one thing that we're we're looking to do. Final page, we're getting close here on these. Number thirty-nine, thirteen point eight point four, abandonment. This is talking about, this is a pretty high priority change. This is abandonment on a non-conforming sign. If it's been discontinued for ninety days, then the sign loses its non-conforming status and must be removed. We're, we're currently, we're allowing people to put blanks, so when you see those white blanks. We let people put white blanks, you know, if there wasn't a business there, then. Then that sign loses its non-conformity in ninety days, and they need to, they need to remove the sign, or bring it into conformity.
So.
He might need his mic on there.
Oh, let me get your mic on so that.
Oh, sorry. So a couple of questions about that, if it's a multi-tenant retail building. And one tenant vacates, that space is vacant for six months, nine months, that doesn't impact the whole center?
No, that's correct. That would be something in those, that kind of thing, which would be a little bit discretionary authority. You know, we would see that as, well, there was a couple of those businesses that are out, but it's really the totality of the, the whole thing. So it would be very difficult for a multi-use tenant sign to meet that criteria.
So next question, let's say we have a retail building that, single-tenant building, tenant moves out. And it takes six months to find a new tenant, then if it's an old sign, sorry, Mr. New Tenant, you got to build a new one.
That's correct. And that, and that is a, that is a new hard line, you know, so just so everybody understands, that's a pretty hard line. But it's one, I think what we've seen is the bringing, especially with this sign grant program we have. Bringing sign, non-conforming signs into compliance is really making a pretty big difference out there visually. And I think as long as we're consistent in our enforcement of it, I think it will be accepted. But understanding it could create some difficulty for some folks, and that there are some timing issues.
There'll, there'll be some, there'll be some landlord and tenants that will not be happy over that one.
So.
Now, when you, when you define use, if it's, again, just using retail, since that's where most of the signage is. And where we're going to have the most issues, let's say it's clothing store today. And tomorrow, it's going to be a record store. Is that a change of use, or is it, it's still retail?
That's still retail.
That's still retail, yeah, that's still retail.
Okay.
Now, if you're changing that to a restaurant, yes, it would have to be removed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Fourteen point seven, compliance with non-conforming status of structure. This was real low priority, it was just some language to clean up some stuff. Fifteen point five, removal of unneeded cell tower requirements. There were some things Timothy poured through on the, about requirements in there for cell towers. And there were just some things that didn't make any sense. I think he discussed it maybe last time that we approved that fresh-run cell tower. There were stuff that we were responsible for that we, then it clearly said we weren't responsible for it. So this, this kind of clarifies that and cleans, cleans that up. And then sixteen point three, we just added some definitions for the EV charging stuff. Some things about signs, smoke shops, and visual, visual, vision clearance triangle. And then the last thing, appendices, we're just removing the subdivision letter of credit template. Because it needs to go into the subdivision regulations. Before I go to the add-ons, and I'll do it really quickly, is there any, anything, anybody has any questions about the stuff that we just went over?
At fifteen fifteen, we skipped over cell tower certification requirement, but is that for a licensed engineer to sign a letter?
Oh, yeah.
Saying there's no explosive materials on site and that kind of stuff?
I'll let Timothy explain that one.
It is not that certification, that's still required. This is a requirement that a engineer, every five years certifies that the tower is still, is still a viable tower. It's not going to fall down.
Okay.
And we have not, we've never gotten those before. So what, this removes that requirement that they, that the city collects that every five years. But it still retains the city's ability to to require that. If at any point there's a problem that crops up, we can go in and say, you've got to provide that certificate to us.
Love it. Thanks for doing the due diligence on that.
All right, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and go roll through these add-ons. These are just things that we realized since we did the, since we did the draft. Bless you. Three point four, three point three point four, table two. Add to table two, the BZA appeal of a planning department interpretation, only have published, not mailed. Yeah, this is just cleaning something up on table two, on checking that box, is what that was. It was some incorrect, incorrect information on there. The next one, three point three point four, table two, this is also cleaning up that table. There was a box that's not checked for the, in the annexation on mailed notice. So we just need to clean that up. Four point one one, this is remove the sign permit language and reference three point one three. What that is, is just referring to something in the document where it refers to to another, another part of the document. It's just a real simple, simple change. Six point two, seven point two, this is just clarifying on that smoke shops, how that thousand feet is calculated. And it's calculated and measured along the streets, and we just wanted to make, make that clear.
Keith, I have a question on the smoke shop.
Yes.
You mentioned thousand feet from another smoke shop. Does, does that thousand feet requirement also apply to schools and churches and those things?
I think it, let me, hold on just a second. I think it did. I think it was a thousand feet, we'll, we'll find out, we'll find out here real quick. Kaitlyn's looking at that.
I thought this one was just to avoid having multiple vape shops within.
Yeah.
Too close to go.
This add-on, this particular add-on is just clarifying how you measure it. But the earlier one we talked about, I think, has that. Kaitlyn, do you?
So the separation, it shall not be located within a thousand feet, measured property line to property line. For a public, public or private school, daycare center, home, youth center, community center. Recreational facility, a park, church, or religious institution, hospital, or any other similar uses. Where children are regularly gathering.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Got that. Thirteen point two point one, under design review and conformance, add denials may be appealed to the planning commission. So that's talking about, I think. So that's talking about, I think, when staff is doing design review, just to clarify that if they don't like our answer on it, it can be appealed to the planning commission. It was just not clear, you know, if they had any options after that. The next one, table seventeen, thirteen point three point one point two. This is just Es and Ps got switched around on that table and we just got to clarify, clean that, clean that up. Thirteen point five point one point two, and this is just adjusting the numbering to clarify that, clearly that changeable copy is under the ground sign principle. So the way it was kind of reading in the proposed draft almost made it sound like you could have changeable copy and you could have a principal ground sign, but your principal ground sign can be changeable copy, but you can't have, you can't have two signs. So that was just, just kind of clarify, clarify that. And just removing some other language that wasn't necessary because it's already covered under ground sign principle. Thirteen point five point one six, just note below G for major regional development artistic sign would read BOMA, not BZA. That was just under, under an image. It was saying that you had to go to the BZA, but, or go to BOMA, but it should have, BOMA, it should have read BOMA, not the BZA, so. Thirteen point five point two point five, add language that changeable electronic copy signs may be allowed as a wall sign for indoor theaters to display current and future showings with approval from the planning commission. This was something that is really kind of the Hendersonville Performing Arts over there. We don't allow any changeable copy, new changeable copy, to go on walls, but where you have a theater, there'd be an opportunity where you could do digital or manual changeable copy, but you'd have to come to the planning commission to get that approved. We just felt like there needed to be an avenue that if somebody wanted to do something like that, and hopefully it was quality, then they could bring it to the planning commission to do that.
Exclusively for indoor theaters?
That's correct. That's correct. Because we did, we did talk about, and I think we talked about it at the work session, we talked about, we talked about have we ever seen a good digital wall sign? And we just couldn't think of one that was really, you know, something that we would want. And so changeable copy is not allowed on wall signs, but this is the one exception. It does give at least a pathway to that. Thirteen point five point two point seven, and this is just removing incidental signs under wall signs. These types of signs are really typically only ground-related and not wall signs. Thirteen point five point three one E, that should, should remain shell, should be shell instead of may for a monument-style sign. So we just wanted to make that, make that clear. Thirteen point five point four two, add zones after commercial and industrial, kind of got lost in there because it was a couple of pages in, just to clarify that, just simple, simple little change, and we're almost there on this one. Thirteen point five point four point three, add zones after residential, also in both of those, both of those things, there's, I think, two places. Thirteen point eight point three, change of use, remove the ownership change triggering compliance with non-conforming signage, like I was talking about earlier. We don't, we don't want to go that far. Eight, thirteen point eight point five, one and two, voluntary replacement signage, provide clarity of no cost for sign permit, add if available for the sign replacement grant funding. So we just wanted to make sure, the way it was written, you know, we don't want somebody saying, hey, you're saying I can have a sign for no cost. So we want to make sure that's the permit on that. And on the funding, only if it's available. So we just kind of wanted to throw that in there. And the final thing was the appendices, letter of credit, removing a reference to subdivision from the language, and that is all of the add-ons. And so with this, I'll open it up for if anybody else has any, anything else with the zoning ordinance they want to, want to get into. The motion moving forward with this would be, you know, adopting, recommending the changes to the zoning ordinance outlined, or to the draft of the zoning ordinance changes as well as the add-ons that were listed in the staff comments. And then that would take care of all these things that I've, that I've went through.
So move.
I did want to recognize how much work that this is and thank you for that. I went through the document in pretty close detail, and you guys have done a lot of work. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will recognize that Timothy did a lot, Caitlin, the whole staff did, Jay Ritterbeck did quite a bit on this as well, and the whole staff really, really chipped in, as well as our public work staff as well, looked through this. So we're hopeful that there are no changes that we really need to make in the next couple of years. This should, should take care of all of those, all those different, different things.
We have a motion, I'll second the motion and we'll vote by, or by electronics.
Keith, how often do planning departments typically do this process? Just on an as-needed basis?
Typically, planning departments, you know, they would do a revision like this probably every five years, but they would always have one, a couple of things every year, but usually a major revision every five years. For us, we did a major revision about three years ago, maybe three, two, twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we did twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, and now twenty twenty-five. So this should be, they were all pretty, pretty significant, but we had a lot of, we had a lot of different adjustments that we wanted to make because over a period of time, communities change and the desires of the community change about what it wants and the vision is for the future. And, you know, the zoning ordinance does need to change to address some of those different things.
Thank you, and I'll echo what Commissioner Kerr said. Applaud the effort and applaud the frequency that you're diving into this detail, because I think when you make smaller incremental changes, it's much easier to manage the evolving needs of a community rather than making grand changes every six or seven years. So well done.
Thank you.
And that motion passed unanimously. So next, we have a resolution before us adopting the proposed.
Real quick, Chairman, motion passed with eight yeses.
Next before us, we have a resolution adopting the proposed revisions to the Hendersonville subdivision regulations. Project Z O A M zero zero six eight two three dash twenty twenty-five leads to planning staff as Keith Free. So speak to this one, Keith?
Yes.
You need a cough drop or anything?
No, I'm good. This is only fifteen of these and there are no add-ons. And I'll, I'll go through this, I'll try to go through it fairly, fairly quickly. I will say, we did this subdivision regulation a few years ago. We did a major revision of it. This revision, the majority of the revisions came from the Public Works Department on addressing some different things, but we had some planning things in here, in here as well, so I really appreciate their efforts to get this. Throughout the whole document, there were minor changes for errors, a lot of things added regarding wastewater language throughout the document. One point one two on setback deviations, add an example and mailed notice. We added recorded to the example and changed from published to mailed notice, from shell to should. So what this is, you know, we had that setback deviation, and so what we're going to do is, if we have that again in the future, we did a courtesy mailing, but this will, this will make it where we're going to notify the adjacent property owners, you know, whenever we have a setback deviation. Because if I live next door to a setback that was being changed, I would want to, I'd want to be aware of it. So we're doing that. And I think that's something we talked about here at the planning commission that we did. This is going to give, give me the, as a director, the authority to correct minor errors, just like we did with the subdivision, the zoning ordinance. On two point two, this is what I talked about, about vesting. This vestifies, clarifies the vesting rules and just like we did in the zoning ordinance, and we did the same thing here, so it mirrors it, mirrors that exactly. Two point three four, we reworded the surety language for land disturbance permit sureties was reworded, it's a simple change. Two point four point five, we removed, decreased the number of units and added water quality language, that's just a minor, minor change in there. We, on two point five five, added construction plan approval time limits. This is a pretty big change. We have not had a time limit of when a construction plans actually go bad, so they could last for years. Plus, we had that whole thing with vesting, which your construction plans, you know, could start, restart the vesting clock, so this, this addresses that.
It's a grandfathered-in, all-open project.
Yes, all-open projects are still vested as they were vested. Yes, these are, these are going to, these are going to catch new projects that are being submitted.
What is the time?
For vesting? It's a good question. What, can you look and see what that is in the?
So the way it works is you've got the preliminary plat is good for three years.
Can you talk a little closer to Mike? Thank you.
The preliminary plat is good for three years. The construction plans would come through at that point, so if the preliminary plat expires, then the construction plans also expire. If a final plat is in place and it expires, the construction plans also expire. So max for the time limit for the preliminary plat and the final plat is three years each, so max is six years total.
Okay, thank you. So it, so it just, it links them together so that construction, you'll never have a situation where you still got a valid construction plan and your preliminary plat or your final plat, you know, is no longer valid. Which isn't the case now, which is, can really, it creates confusion and it created a lot of confusion, I think, with Fountain, no, Falcon Ridge. Yeah, so. All right, thank you, Commissioner. Two point three, four point three and two point six point five, remove the allowance for time extensions for preliminary and final plats. Instead of having a bunch of time extensions on all of this, let's, we're just changing it where it just goes with the vesting, because really, it's vested by state law anyway, so whether we approved an extension or not, you know, but we can, we, and then it just gets rid of the extensions where you could give an extension on vesting, I think that's still in there, that you could maybe give an extension, but it, it doesn't do it the way that it is, that it is now. Three point two point four one A, lot compatibility would not apply to subdivisions totaling less than five lots. So, you know, when we're subdividing lots, when we're subdividing lots and we do lot compatibility, if, if it's only four lots, there's really not very many lots to do lot compatibility. So, and sometimes it can really skew, it can skew the numbers, you know, if you've only got four lots. So this is saying lot compatibility would only occur in phases where you had more than four, more than, more than four lots, so you'd have to have five lots or more. It's kind of what we, it's what we've run into.
So today, it's, what are the standards today?
Yeah, there's no, there's no limit on the lot compatibility. You could be a three-lot phase in a subdivision and we do the lot compatibility, but we haven't really run, I don't think we've really run into any that small, but we've kind of run some different numbers. And if you had some odd lots, it would really, it could turn out to something, you know, kind of odd when we're calculating.
If you had those that had two and three lots, are they being grandfathered in at all, or is there anything to grandfather?
Well, the lots, the lots are okay, it's just creating new lots. So it's just about creating the new lots. So when you got, I'll just kind of explain it real quick. So when you got, say, a phase in a subdivision that has ten lots and they're all whatever size that they are, and then you've got one lot that may be a little bit bigger than the others, and you want to divide that and create two lots? And for example, if it's SR one, even if you had forty thousand square foot, twenty thousand square foot is the minimum requirement for the lot size, so you might think, oh, well, I can divide that into two lots. Well, that's where lot compatibility comes in. Then we run the lot compatibility and then we determine, yeah, you can't do that. Even though you can meet the minimum zoning requirements, you can't meet lot compatibility. And really, all lot compatibility is trying to make sure that we don't have, you know, this neighborhood, it's already fully developed, and then somebody's coming in dividing up lots and they create lots that are off-skewed and they're really not, you know, appropriate. And, you know, and that's really, that's really what lot compatibility is. Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim. I didn't know you had a question.
No, I didn't. I was just making a comment.
No, Jim.
John, I'm sorry. I said Jim.
He said Jim and it got me started, John.
Yeah, I got a question. I'm not sure if this is the time or place to do this, but we've had occasion in the past two or three that I can remember specifically where we have larger lots that the buildings are torn down and they divide the lots into smaller lots. And the process to do that, as I understand it, is that lot has to be somewhere near the size of the lots, the average size of the lots around it.
Yes.
And from my perspective, I see no advantage to the community or the city to lower, to reduce the size of a lot in an existing neighborhood smaller than the average of the lots that are around it.
Right.
So do we have a standard number on that that we use or?
We, we do. When we calculate that, then, you know, there's all kinds of calculations we use, but I think it's ninety percent. So basically, if on the average, you do something that's ninety percent of the average, then we allow you to subdivide the lot.
Can we make that a hundred percent? How do we do that?
Well, you could just, through this process, you could just, in the approval of the subdivision regulations, you could just add that on there, that approving it with the draft with this one, with that change to increase that from ninety percent to a hundred percent regarding lot compatibility.
I would like to add that to the motion when the time comes.
Okay, and then that would, that would do that. Really what that would do is you would, you would truly have only average lots could be created, not just close.
Yeah.
It'd have to be right on the, the hundred percent would just do that. Is that, that is correct, right? Okay, yeah, that is it.
Now, the only thing, John, and just as a point, what if you ran into an easement issue in there and that screwed the lot size up? Do you really want to wound that landowner with that problem? You understand?
I don't think so.
I'm just, I'm just asking if there was an easement, if there was something that came in and took that lot down to the ninety-fourth, ninety-fifth percent?
Wouldn't that be a BZA thing?
I don't know. I'm not sure. If we put a hundred percent in there, are we eliminating that from a BZA thing?
It's not a BZA. Yeah, you can't.
I was going.
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't take that to the BZA.
Okay.
That would.
I'm just making sure you're getting the intent you're wanting out of this.
Well, the intent is to keep somebody from putting two little cracker boxes in between two nicer houses by virtue of the fact that they, there's three lots that are, that are smaller.
And I understand what your intent, but.
That's happened in several places.
So would ninety percent get it or, you know, because there, a lot of times, there's these unforeseen things that.
I'd rather see it a hundred and twenty percent, frankly.
So there are.
Just stop that altogether.
There's really two criteria.
It really wrecks neighborhoods.
There's really two criteria that we calculate for. One is ninety percent pertains to the average lot frontage, but then we also look at, the requirement is the average area of the lot, you multiply that by seventy-five percent.
Oh, seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent for area, ninety percent for lot frontage.
And I, and I'm still not understanding why it's not a hundred percent. I mean, is there, do we want to make the lot smaller in neighborhoods so that we can put more houses in them? Is that our objective? Or do we want to maintain the neighborhood like it is? I mean, I'm not understanding the, the reasoning here.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is just, not that it can't change, it's just been, it's just been longstanding, you know, calculation, but then that would be, then that would be changing both of those to a hundred percent. Yeah. So, what, would you say seventy-five and ninety?
Yeah.
So, changing the seventy-five and ninety to a hundred and a hundred on that, on that calculation.
Because you'd have to have a hundred percent.
Just to make it not possible. I mean, why, why would we do that unless there was three acres out here that somebody was sitting on? And then we would still match the, the lots around it. Point being, we're, we're about built out. We know that. We have lots and lots and lots of houses that are being remodeled nicely in town. So, why would we take away from that quality to, to build smaller houses on the same lot? I, I, I just don't see where we're helping anybody by doing that.
Yeah, the hun, the hundred and a hundred would, the hundred and a hundred would reduce the potential of subdividing a lot, an existing lot. So, yeah, it would.
Which is my objective. I, maybe I'm off base here.
But it would, it would reduce it, but it would also level it up equal with the other existing lots.
Mm-hmm.
So, you'd really, the only way, the only, if you did it a hundred and a hundred, then the only way you could ever subdivide is if, I'm just, I'm not, this isn't the calculation, but you had a three acre, you know, not three acre, you had an acre lot, and then, you know, all the other lots were, you know, half acre. You know what I mean? It'd need to be something that was pretty significant to bring those averages in. But if it was something where all the lots were twenty thousand square feet, and then yours was, you know, forty-five, it, depending on how many houses that we're calculating, it, you, it may not be possible to do it. But I, I know what you're, I know what you're saying. It would reduce the number of new lots that could be created from existing lots.
Which is, again, my objective.
Yes, I totally understand.
Keith's question. Let, let, let's just, as an example, let's say you had a lot that's one point three acres, and you had one lot that's point nine acres. Same subdivision, right?
Yes.
What are you measuring the hundred percent on? Is it the point nine, or the one point three, or, or an average of the two?
It's the, it's the average.
Okay.
We're calculating all of it.
So, you take every lot?
Yep.
And you do a simple average, basically, and come up with square footage?
That's correct.
And that has to be a hundred percent.
That's correct.
You throw, you throw out outliers, they're like more than fifty percent above the, above or below the.
Throw out the high and the low. Go with the average.
And then on the width, we do the same thing where, you know, we're looking at, what are all the widths of all the lots at the setback, and then averaging what that would be.
Is that in line with what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
What about the house compatibility?
I haven't gotten there yet. What if the house is built across a lot line, and you consolidate two lots into one? I mean, you've got a lot of variations, and I know there are answers to all of that, but, but my objective is, again, to, let's, let's not, let's not take an existing neighborhood and take a house that's on a nice lot, and because it meets those average requirements, all of a sudden, we have two smaller incompatible houses in that existing neighborhood.
Okay.
It just doesn't seem that that serves anybody's purpose except the, the person building the houses.
Yeah. And Barry has comments too. Go ahead.
My question with this is, we're basically talking about the two peninsulas, is, is where we're, so how many, how many lots do we count, put into that calculation? Because other than hidden point, there's, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of lots back through there. So, how many, how many do you use to get your calculation?
Yeah.
I, I don't want to belabor this, because it's getting close to time clock.
Yeah.
But, sorry.
It's, it's, it's driven.
Is this for another discussion?
No, it's okay. It, it's driven, it's driven by the phase. So, if you had a hundred lot subdivision, and it was broken into four phases, and there's twenty-five lots in each phase, wherever your lot is, you want to subdivide just that phase of the subdivision, that's the only area within a certain area within that phase, that's the only area we're looking at. We're not looking at the entire subdivision, or a mean of like the entire peninsula or anything. So, it's real specific to that section and phase of your particular development.
Has to, yeah, it has to be within a named subdivision.
Yeah.
Which means there are some lots out there that aren't in a subdivision.
Right.
Well, that's kind of where I was headed.
Not, not many, but.
And then the reason for four lots or less, we have a lot of lots that get created that are two acre lot, you know, even, two, three acre lots, and there's three or four of them, you know, but they're not really for development, you know, and then that lot, we don't want lot compatibility to kick in on these super larger lots that are just getting ready for development at some point. We don't want to hamstring those, those things. But we do want to address lot compatibility at the street level, so that if your neighbor's, you know, tears down the house and wants to subdivide the property, it's compatible generally with your lot size. And the lot, the lot size of the other homes in your particular section of that subdivision.
And this does apply just to residential, not commercial?
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. Okay. So, you just would need to add that as a, an add-on to that. Okay. All right. This is also about lot compatibility. Three point two, point four, one C. Lot compatibility right now on cul-de-sacs, the way it's written, it doesn't really matter if it's a cul-de-sac. We're counting the other lots that aren't cul-de-sac lots, you know, in that. And so, what we're suggesting here is, when we're doing lot compatibility for cul-de-sacs, we're just counting the cul-de-sac lots in that particular section, which we feel would be a more fair approach, which probably would even be, still be good to add that, especially if we're doing the hundred percent on this. Three point two, point six, point five. This was driveway and sidewalk requirements. I think that had to do with slope, with something that Public Works had on there. Three point three, point five, six. Traffic impact study. Remove the language and refer to a separate Public Works document. They've got their traffic impact study document they have, and it's referring, referring to that. Three point ten, point five. Add notes about underground and above-ground utilities, that's just a simple wording. Five point two, add definitions for city engineer or designee, permanent stormwater control measure, public work, works director or designee, stormwater management facilities, and water quality repair and buffer. So, we're going to add those definitions. And then the appendices, we're just going to remove the annexation flow chart and remove the construction, and going to remove construction plan checklist. And that's everything that I had. Was there any other questions about the subdivision regulations?
Charles, I see you're in the queue.
I see. You're going to remove the construction plan checklist, and you say you're going to add a new one? Is that what you said?
That's what it says on there. What is that?
You're going to just remove it?
It allows for the flexibility if we need to update the checklist.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Okay, that brings up another question or so. In the packet, on the footnotes for these documents, it refers to an ordinance number for the subdivision regulations. This doesn't go to the alderman, does it?
No.
This is just a document from the Planning Commission.
That's correct. That is correct.
So, if it's an appendice to the document, wouldn't you have the option of changing it anytime you want to, anyway?
Well, it would still have to be, it would still have to be approved by the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted, we wanted to take out the checklist, because those things can change, and we didn't want to have to, if the checklist changed, then bring it back to the Planning Commission. You know, if we had, add something to the, to the checklist.
Okay.
Yeah, just, we'll just reference it.
But also, several places in this document, you refer to the City of Hendersonville construction spenders standards and specifications.
Yeah.
Where are those? I have it saved, and I can't find them.
That's a, that's a good question. Steve?
So, they were posted online at one point in time, and then our website changed, I can't remember exactly, maybe a year and a half ago, and we've been working to revise that site to get it reposted again. So, that change hasn't occurred to get them reposted, but.
You know, those are documents I know that are not necessary, that you want to protect as far as the subdivision regulations are concerned. But if you've got an engineer coming to town to div, to design a subdivision, he's expecting to find all he needs to know in your subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance. You know, and those documents sometimes are very difficult to find. You know, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what they are, but I mean.
And when we do receive a request for our standards, we do share that, that document with the developer. But again, I, I understand your concern, and we, again, we have been working to get those reposted on our website.
Okay.
Is that all, Charles?
Yeah.
Okay. Timothy, do you have anything you were saying?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right. So, now, we need a motion on this resolution, and I would suspect, John, you would like to offer it since you have an amendment you want to add to it.
I'm so moved if someone will help me with the wording for what? Just an add-on.
It would be to adopt the proposed changes to the subdivision regulations.
Yes.
Including removing on compatibility calculations for lots, on compatibility standards, removing the ninety percent and seventy-five percent calculation, and replacing those with one hundred percent calculations for lot compatibility.
Yes, so moved.
So moved. There's his motion. Do I have a second? We have a second from Mr. Kerr. So, we'll vote this by electronic.
Motion passed with eight yeses.
Thank you.
Good job, Keith.
All right. Next, we have staff-level projects approved. Do I need to go through and read these to everyone, or has everybody seen this? Anything that, Keith, you want to talk about on these?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
What about the pending? Anything you want to speak about on those?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll skip over both of those. They, all of you all can read those for yourselves. Then the last thing that we have is projects that are currently deferred by the applicant. Keith brought this up today to me in our meeting. Wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this. They're going to start trying to post these on our agenda, so that people know that are, anything that's been pulled and is pending, you know, has been withdrawn by the applicant and asked for a later date, they'll show up here. That way, people will know about it, and the community will be able to keep up with its progress. And you can see, the one that was pulled last time, JLR, is expected to be on the agenda on the October seventh meeting. Okay? Any questions about that? All right. So, we'll move on. Next one's Planning Director comments. You have anything else you'd like to say?
No comments this evening.
All right. So, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
All right. Do I have a second? Barry, you should have volunteered for it. You're the one talking at the time.
There we go.
I'll, I'll agree. Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. Any noes, we'll move on. Thank you. Have a great night, y'all.
We can build a Yule log.